All right, the time is 5:30. I'm going to call to order the committee of the whole for January 24th, 2025. Clerk Oak, could you read the roll?
Councilmember Pallie Van Ooglu.
Present.
Councilmember Jackson.
Present.
Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Cost.
Here.
Councilmember Carter.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Present.
Councilmember Spatafor. Eight members present.
Thank you. We are on to the minutes. Vice President Carter.
Yes, I would like to make a motion to approve the February 10th, 2025 minutes as presented.
Okay, we have proper motion in place. Is there any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Passes unanimously. Next, we are on to public comment on agenda items. You will have up to three minutes to speak. There are no virtual participants tonight, so if anyone in the audience would like to speak, now is your time. Can you please state your name for the record?
Good evening. My name is Mitch Rice. I live in the Second Ward. Item E. I believe that there is very limited information about the HRCS, the Human Resources Community Services Planned Expenditures for the carryover for FY25, and recommend the city council require more defined and detailed plans in respect for approval. The document reads, "HRCS aims to create a low-barrier outdoor shelter to address homelessness in the City of Lansing and supplement the agency gaps in services for the unhoused. Every effort has been made to absorb any excess grant funds previous years into the community problem-solving account to help fund the effort to keep our unhoused neighbors safe." HRCS plans to expand $1,088,726.71 on an alternative shelter project. Unclear what it is, and I sent something in question of that previously. $682,178.92 spent through the community problem-solving account. Additionally, I wonder about an allocation of $50,982 for the PPA homelessness study. Who will do this study? When and how will the citizens know about the results? Furthermore, another vague expenditure, completing a community needs assessment at $80,000. It reads, "This will allow the RFP, Request for Proposal, to be issued and perform a comprehensive assessment of local human service needs and gaps. We do personally care for the unsheltered. My wife Candy and I regularly volunteer for the city rescue mission and support this service provider financially. I'm supportive of the city helping those in need, but careful scrutiny is always prudent." Lastly, item H. I'm supportive of the resolution to deny the transfer of the three liquor licenses. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else with public comment?
Starts now. Thank you. Good evening. Edouard Zany here on behalf of speaking in regards to the advanced UZP application and the resolution that's been submitted this evening in opposition to the transfer. I did submit a written correspondence to, I think, everybody on council. I have extra copies here, which I think further articulates and probably clarifies a lot of the misunderstanding of the intended transfers and the intended result of these transfers. And I did articulate 4519 South MLK would be one that was withdrawn from MLC consideration, thereby lightening the load, shall we say, to some degree. Comes down to two licenses being transferred to two different locations, opposite sides of the city. And I think, I speak from a position of being raised and a product of this community that I share in the sentiment, we want good business to participate in building a stronger community. And that's exactly what I believe, and I believe I've articulated that in the letter. Something I'm providing assurances for. I put it in writing. I'm standing before you this evening to articulate the same, so you can hear it from my mouth. What our proposed operation looks like at these two locations is not your standard liquor store. It's not what some may perceive as liquor plastered across the face of it and having nothing but liquor in the stores. This is an opportunity. Yes, it's a license, it's governed by MLCC, but it's an opportunity to take properties that frankly, we can't rent. There's no other renters coming for small business. So we're taking properties and putting them to good use, a taxable use that creates additional revenues and local employment for local people. The opportunity that we present, I personally am coming here to articulate, is to not just better these properties in a form and fashion consistent with code, consistent with the needs of the community, but I think the development and the progress that the change and licensing will allow for access to a budget that's going to allow for the improvements that are going to lend to what we know are areas that in the entire city suffer from some criminal element. There's going to be better lighting, better access, better communication, there's going to be cameras, there's going to be access and mandates under the terms of the licensing. So these intended transfers provide a lot more than just liquor sales to a community that thinks they have too many liquor licenses. It provides a base to expound on the needs and the services that we can provide. I've articulated very specifically what those intended services in these operations look like. I articulated the infrastructure improvements that are budgeted and are promised, and I will stand by the promise. These are opportunities to take properties and build on a better aspect of the community. Their location is there, yes, but for convenience, they are in communities that still have needs. As much as we want to protect the communities, we can also serve the communities. I'll end with a quick story. When I was 13, we caught a kid stealing. I grew up in the liquor store business and the party store business, but the people business, and I made sure that kid had food because that's what my father taught me. And that's what these, the fabric of my operation is going to offer, if nothing more.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment?
Hello. My name is Nigels Zany, and I am the president of the Old Everett Neighborhood Association, and I'm going to speak on items D and E, and those are deficit elimination plan and budget amendments, carryforwards from fiscal year '23 to '24, to fiscal year '24, '25. I'm going to make this clear where I stand on deficit elimination and that there is a right way and a wrong way to do this by, for eliminating deficits. A right way to do this would be to place a tax increase on wealthy, high-income individuals so that the deficit can be lowered and at least eliminated, and wealth gap can be pinched significantly. The wrong way to do this is what the so-called US, quote, "Department of Government Efficiency" is doing by holding our taxpayer money hostage by eliminating several budgets from several departments without the approval of Congress. And if there's anything that should be done with the deficit, it should be done with the approval of a legislative body, and you, the city council, are that legislative body, so please do not consider doing what Elon Musk is doing with our budget. Because while you may think, oh, that's federal stuff that's not going to affect us, it probably will because considering that as a neighborhood leader who's actually trying to get a neighborhood grant and start a bank account for said grant, I'm worried that those could be cut off by Musk's reckless, quote, "spending cuts" without congressional approval when he wasn't even voted into that office by the public, and the Department of Government Efficiency isn't really a real department because it wasn't really created with congressional approval. So it's very clear that there is a right way and a wrong way, and the wrong way and the right way is to just not do what Doge is doing federally when it comes to cutting to, quote, "cutting deficits." And what they're doing is not cutting the deficit because those tariffs are going to make the deficit even worse. So please, don't do what Trump and Musk are doing and actually try to cut the deficit with an actual plan through the city council. That's all I'm going to say. Now, shall yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else for public comment?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I am here to talk about the noise issue ordinance waiver, which is number 6C, I believe. If I can... Deborah Mulcahy? Deborah Mulcahy? Sorry. I just want to reiterate, and the issue within our community is we would like some peace for a couple of days. They were gone for a few days this past week because of the weather, and as cold as it was, it was enjoyable because we were able to get out and about and not have our houses rock and roll. I was sitting working this morning in my office, and all of a sudden, things started rattling, and I'm like, oh, what's going on? Oh, they're back to work. When it's presented by the city that this work needs to be done as a result of a court order in 2019, that's six years ago. They can go before the court, and they could ask for amendments, they can work with DEQ and ask for changes. Why is it we are the only neighborhood, they are working six days a weekend now and continue, want to continue through December? They shut down the project on Michigan Avenue, they didn't do that work on east side of MLK, even MDOT shut down 127, or 96 merging into 127 because of the winter activities. It's dangerous, it's cold, and it's not a very pleasant situation. So those of us that live in the neighborhood in the summertime when we want to open our windows because we don't have air conditioning, we don't want to deal with that noise and the smell and the activity. We would just like some days of peace. So I ask you to be mindful that when you're looking at this in reference to the noise, yes, we all want it done yesterday. I would like to be able to drink out of my tap water instead of having to boil my water constantly, every day, for anything, washing my face, drinking, cooking, I have to boil my water because it is brown and it is gross. I would like to not clean my toilets twice a week at a minimum. I'd like it to be done, but I also would like some sense of calm in the community. And looking at summertime when our neighbor kids are out playing, I think people need to be given a break, just a break from the activity. So I think somebody needs to ask the city, why do you need to have this really? What is the real purpose of it going forward in this particular community? And I ask you to be mindful of that because that's what we've been dealing with. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else for public comment? Seeing no takers? Oh, I'm sorry.
Good evening. Good evening. How you guys doing today? All right. So I just got a small comment about the resolute and... Oh, Andy Markovich?
Thank you.
Yep. Born and raised in the city, so got some, anyways, got some time under my belt. Anyways, I'm talking about resolute and H, about the liquor licenses. Mainly, my thought was that they've been here for quite a long time with Rite Aid and stuff, and with the new owners trying to purchase the license and just move them to a different part of the city, shouldn't affect the sale of the liquor licenses because they are valuable and they're limited to where you can, to have them in the first place. So if he's able to do it, it seems like a good investment for the city because once you have a party store like Quality Dairy or any other ones, they all have liquor licenses and they all have more than just liquor. So having another party store in the area probably would help bring the community to its needs, so that's about all I got to say about that today. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Can you tell I'm really nervous?
Anyone else for public comment? Okay, seeing none, we are going to move on to our agenda item five presentations. The first presentation we have is B, the general fund status report for fiscal year 2024, 2025, second quarter. I believe we have Jake here for that.
Just for...
And Mark.
No.
Oh. And then Elizabeth as well, I believe, is here for that, or no?
Sorry, that was a mistake.
Oh, s-.
Those folks are coming for the vacancy report.
Yep. Sorry, moving ahead too quick.
Hello, Jake Brower, Chief Strategies Officer. A pleasure to be here before the board. Overall, what you have in front of you is our second quarter general fund status report. Overall, for FY25, the city adopted a budget in the general fund of $165.2 million total revenue, including transfers, and $165.4 million in total expenditures. Within that budget and your policies, you authorized us to carry forward the unused charter commission funds from FY24, and so that is being used to continue the activities of that charter commission, which are progressing presumably on track. As of 6:30, 2024, so for this report, it is the first report after our financial audit, so we have the updated general fund balances of $40.65 million with $31.37 million unassigned. The administration continues to monitor expenditures and seek necessary savings to maintain vital services while also making strategic investments to grow the city's economy and strengthen the quality of life for residents, workers, business owners, and visitors. We've been making notable strides, as you can see in the updates later to our vacancy report, but overall, as we look at our budget, general fund revenue collected through the second quarter was over $99 million, about 59.9% of the budget. As you go through our expenditures, we are just slightly over the three-year average by 0.1%. When it comes to our revenues, property taxes are the city's largest source, and the city property taxes generally come on the July tax billing, and so the city's also going through with its winter tax billing being due, and so the Treasury Department is hard at work collecting that, which largely goes to the taxes that we collect on behalf of counties and other local units. But overall, we're currently projecting our property taxes to come in right on track. And so beyond that, we have our income taxes, which are 25.8% of our general fund budget. Collections year-to-date were $15,340,000. This is one that we're kind of watching as the year progresses, coming slightly under track for the year-to-date, although we're also seeing some areas of economic activity as the various locations that are in development are starting to come online, particularly in the battery world that you might be familiar with. And so we're hoping to continue watching that before we hit any panic button. But beyond that, looking at our state grants, you probably heard very recently, although it's not reflected in this report, that we received a $1.4 million distribution for medical marijuana tax revenues from the state. Sadly for me and budgeting, we hit that exactly on the mark, so there's no extra money, so to speak, but also, we're not coming to you with any alarming news there. We do have a budget amendment coming to you later today that adjusts our constitutional revenue sharing estimate down from where it was when we originally budgeted to what is the current state projections, which is just relation to sales tax collections of the state. Overall, as we look into next year, we're projecting fairly slow growth there. About a 4% increase on the statutory side is included in the governor's budget, although the slow growth on the constitutional side is expected to bring our total there to about 2.5%. Our next largest source of revenue is our return on equity payment, which is the payments to the city from the Board of Water and Light for the city's ownership stake in that. This is a 6% of budget figure, and the odd amounts of the year-to-date are due to basically the allocated revenues as part of their internal budgeting procedures. And so we have a schedule of that, and they're proceeding right on track with those payments. The other sources of revenue amount to less than 10% of the budget in total, but we have our charges for services trending slightly above the three-year average, fines and forfeitures, interest and rents, and our other miscellaneous revenues. Within our general fund expenditures, you can see that our media center is slightly higher than budget, and this is due to new parking expenses for their relocation. We address this in the budget amendment coming to you later today that adds us about $14,000 to their budget to cover the annual cost, and this is something that relates to their move from where they used to be housed in SWAC, which is no more, and they're now in the North Capitol Ramp for the time being and eventually moving into the Ovation Site when that comes fully online. When they do move into that final location, they will still be utilizing parking services, so that will be, continue to be part of their budget. One novelty of that aspect is that the expenditure for them is a revenue for our parking system, and so while it's not making or breaking the parking system, I'm sure the folks in the Economic Development and Planning Department are very happy about that. Lastly, we have our basic human services, city-supported agencies, and you'll also see these elements being incorporated into budget carryforwards and showing up on the next quarterly report when, if council approves the carryforward request. Are there any questions as to the budget report?
I have the internal auditor.
Hi, Jake. Thank you for being here. I appreciate your presentation.
Thank you.
I understand the general fund status here reporting is very detailed that you have, and looking forward to item number D as far as the deficit elimination plan. I was wondering if we're... Yes. Sorry. Looking forward to item number D as far as the deficit elimination plan. I was wondering if we could get any kind of reports on other funds as well to see if they're also in good standing, just as well as the general fund. It doesn't, I don't think we've needed such detail as this, but just the general idea that, hey, these are being watched in addition to the general fund so that we're aware if something's going to come up like it did last year as far as being over budget.
No, I think that is a good idea and a good practice for the city to start getting into. I know it's something that we've talked about, the idea maybe years passed, but it's not something that we pulled the trigger on and sending formal reports to city council, but I think that's something that particularly moving to BSNA, we might be, have the tools at our disposal to make that a little easier to provide on a regular basis, so I think that's a great idea.
Thank you. That's all I have.
All right. I have Councilman Jackson.
Thank you. I understand that this is just a second quarter report, but my question is, has to do with, do we have, have we identified any federal funds that we received, and are we concerned about any of the threats about receiving them, especially since Lansing, we claim to be strong on equity diversity inclusion and the such? And if so, do we have any plan to combat it or to adjust?
Yes, I think it's something that we are watching very closely along with every other local government, university. I think that as far as our reoccurring grant revenues, we're fairly insulated. The only grant that comes with permanent full-time staff is our Economic Development and Planning, CDBG block grant type activities. These are, have a very strong impact in our communities, and so this is something that we want to keep secured, but as of this time, we're attending plenty of informational calls, and we're hearing pretty much everyone tell us, hey, we know just as much or little as you, and so we're keeping an eye on that. I think where we can do well is that for the grants that we are working on, make sure that we're keeping to the requirements, we're not getting out of, too far out of what might be acceptable. I know that when we were talking about our ARPA dollars back in the day, a big thing we said was, this is a lot of money. It would be a lot of money to pay back if we used it improperly, and so the important thing is that we be cautious about it and we don't bake this into our budget forecasts long-term. And so I think taking that careful approach has insulated the City of Lansing pretty well against any potential shakeups, although we have a number of large projects, whether it's our $10 million, $8 million of that being federal for electric vehicle infrastructure. That grant is still confirmed to be going forward, but we're watching that carefully and getting that project along at full speed. We also have $5 million for forestry, and one of the grants that we're, we were awarded but did not receive a contract before the change in administration was our Reconnecting Communities Program grant, of which they announced the city receiving $1 million for a planning grant to explore the concept of putting a cap over the 496 highway system, and so far, that is on a pause status, although they haven't gone to us and said officially that they're withdrawing the grant award, but just sitting in a state of don't know anything and won't proceed on it until we know more.
Thank you. So it sounds like in summary, you have, you guys are contemplating all of this and...
Absolutely.
Moving accordingly. Is it going to reflect that in the budget, like asterisks or discretionary?
I don't think so. It sounds like the federal funds, at least the Formula CDBG funds are proceeding on track. I think what we will have to look for is the federal government putting together their budget for next year. Their funding runs out in March, and so there will be a lot of potentially bargaining, deal-making, and we will see the impact of that and whether or not there's any changes or everything settles out to be mostly a scare.
All right, I have Councilman Spatafor.
Thank you. Jake, I think that was a good answer on sort of the city's financial standing should federal funds be threatened, but I do want to caution, like, not to be too complacent and that we have about $3.5 million just in CDBG and ESG and home grants and things like that, that while does not fund city operations, it is very important to this community. So our representatives in Washington need to know that those dollars are important for this community, and the city's budget not dependent on federal funds for sure, but a lot of the things that are done in this community, we act as a flow-through, as you know, and support a lot of very good projects in our community. So just wanted to flag that. That's not pushing back on your answer. I think your answer was completely accurate, but there are a lot of things we need to be keeping an eye on because our residents will be harmed if those dollars are clawed back or cut.
Yes, I think you're exactly correct there, and it points a lot to potential secondary effects we might see. So a lot of this will harm nonprofits in particular, much to a higher degree than us universities, and those are jobs that pay people salaries that would hit our income taxes if people can't afford nice houses or making building improvements, moving and uncapping their property taxes. That would affect our property tax revenues, and so those are definitely things we need to keep an eye on. We can be affected in a way that isn't just the federal dollars, so that's a very good point you have.
Any further questions? Doesn't look like it. All right.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Next, we are going to move on to item C, which is the vacancy report. We have some folks from HR here. If you could just make sure the green light's on. If you could just make sure the green light's on.
Great, thank you. Thank you for having us. I wanted to start out, we had a series of questions that we were sent prior, and I'll start with the public service questions. The first one was, with over 60 vacancies in public service and the ongoing challenges in the hiring seasonal workers, what's a justification for hiring a managerial position at the time rather than prioritizing frontline staff needs? So I inquired with the Public Service Department, because I think I expressed to this body last month that the priority of hiring is determined by the departments, and they're the ones that give us our order of business when it comes to hiring. So they've relayed that every frontline position in the fleet is posted, O and M, property maintenance, and most of wastewater. The business manager position, I think that was of question at some point, is a reclass recently of a vacated position, and it's to assist with the duties of the deputy director and the director, so that, so that they can focus on more steps in the hiring process, such as JDQs and other things that need to be done to have some of our positions classified, because it has a thorough and pretty rigorous review when it comes to getting those classified. The next question is, what are the specific difficulties that the department has faced in hiring CDL drivers to fill the vacant positions? Is the pay a primary factor, and how does the Lansing's compensation compare to similar roles in the neighboring municipalities? I will note that finding people with a CDL that would like to come work here has been a struggle, but we do have a bit of an advantage having our CDL program in-house where people can come in without a CDL and get trained by city workers and through our city program. We've had success in that. Approximately 12 people have received their CDL through the city program, and so that's how we are working to tackle this. So the next question was, given the struggles in hiring seasonal workers last year, what changes are being made to ensure that only essential services such as yard waste collection are maintained at a high level of consistency? So the answer I was given was the operations and maintenance are training maintenance workers to fill in when necessary within the solid waste section. The solid waste seasonal position requires candidates to have a CDL because of the vacancies with other full-time CDL positions in O and M. We've been promoting those that apply for a seasonal position to also apply for the full-time position as well. So those that come in, we have hopes of getting them through that pipeline to become permanent full-time employees, especially those CDLs. What steps are the city, is the city taking to make these positions more attractive, such as increasing wages, hiring incentives, or improving job benefits? The steps that were mentioned here, they're subject to collective bargaining, and it's something that was always a factor when we go into negotiations, and it's always, and it can be challenging when it comes to cost, because we don't have an unlimited budget when it comes to that, but rest assured that's at the top of our minds of how can we recruit and retract and attract and make that benefit package competitive within the budgetary guidelines that we're working with. The next question was, how does the hiring process for these positions work, and are there barriers within the process that may discourage applicants from completing it? The hiring process, it includes the initial application, and if assistance is needed with the application, our specialists are willing to provide. Written tests and skills demonstrations are performed along with interviews, background checks, reference checks, pre-employment physicals are also performed. For internal promotions, our process is shorter, because we have a clause within our CBAs that speaks to a senior qualified. We also shorten that if somebody has worked out a class in the position for a number of 30 days, then they get to bypass portions of the process. And that's all negotiated in the CBA. We've also been intentional about filling these vacancies. We offer flexibility when it comes to timelines for CDLs. I mean, we've offered 60 and 90 and sometimes 120 days for people to, once we get them in, to get those CDLs, and so we, and we also assist with that. We're also working to eliminate barriers to provide more employment access to returning citizens. So that's another thing that we're working with, along with, we're working on forming a partnership with the Refugee Development Center as well. So we're looking outside the box to form these relationships to get the pipelines through to fill these positions. The next question was, if wages are identified as a primary issue, is there a plan to adjust the pay scales to make sure that positions are more competitive with other municipalities? If not, what are alternative solutions that could be considered? Compensation and benefits are collectively bargained in most of our positions. The trainee programs are an alternative solution to growing our talent. The average CDL driver in Michigan is making about $64,000. With our benefit packages, we're close to that range. We've processed about 97 reclasses from January 1 of 2023 to present, which take into consideration the market when it comes to classifying these positions. Out of the 97, eight have returned and increased in compensation levels. The next question was, with yard waste collection currently happening only every other week due to staffing shortages, what immediate and long-term solutions is a department exploring to ensure more timely and reliable service for residents? I checked in with the Public Service Department on this question, and they stated as far as yard waste, they did switch to every other week during the pandemic due to staffing issues. Since that time, however, it's been, continued to improve operations and keep costs down. Yard waste is very light in the summer months unless there are large storms, so it doesn't make sense to drive the trucks on the city streets and the city to pick up the small amount of yard waste generated by a limited number of households. The last question for the Public Service Department was, what is the department's timeline for addressing these vacancies and what accountability measures are in place to ensure progress is being made? I do want to note that HR and the Public Service Department has weekly meetings and touchpoints to discuss the vacancies. We also have interfaced with our UAW president, Darren, who is constantly getting updates on these positions and can provide them to the union membership as well. Everyone's on the same page. We want to get these positions posted as quickly as possible, and I do want to note that Michelle Nguyen, our specialist for the Public Service Department, is doing a phenomenal job. She's been in the position about approximately, I think it's coming up on one year, and so things are getting quicker and quicker as she's learning all the ins and outs and the processes of these positions, the CBAs, and all the different requirements, because this is specialized hiring. So that was the Public Service Department. Did we want to pause for questions on that piece?
Do we have any questions? Councilman Garza.
Thank you, Council President. Thanks for being here this evening, you guys. Appreciate it. When you mentioned that you are doing CDL in-house training, and you said you received 12 of them, how many of those are still with the city?
I'll have to get the number of which ones are still there. That's about 12 that have gone through the process. I think there have been some that have gone on to other employment.
Okay, and when you mentioned you're close to that range, exactly how far of a difference is that range?
Dennis, do you have?
This is just off the top. I didn't look at this, but 400 maintenance worker, which is a general CDL truck driver, I believe, they tap out right around 56 or 57. Average in Michigan is about $64,000, so if you add our benefits package in there, you're fairly close.
Okay. And regarding the collective bargaining agreement, I understand that, but I mean, has there been, are you guys willing to work with the unions to try to bring that pay up so we get to that point to where we don't end up leaving our, having people get trained and then leaving to other municipalities?
I mean, we're always looking to increase it, but again, we have to be mindful of the budget and not over-leverage ourselves to prepare for potential economic downturns. But yes, we're always, we're always looking to maximize our employees' benefits, so...
And I appreciate that, Dennis. I mean, I just continue, year after year, I see approximately $1.5 million in the vacancy factor. I mean, so I mean, we're constantly not using that money, so I would hope that when you guys are in those collective bargaining discussions, that that money could go towards recruiting, you know, people, and so we're not, so we're retaining them as well. And regarding, how many current vacancies do we have right now that are budgeted?
In which department or city?
Just across the city. I think I asked that before, I couldn't get a straight answer. The reason why I'm asking is because I see there's 20 online currently right now, job applications. Are the other ones, are they like posted internally, and that's why they're not seeing it shown online?
One thing to note about the online job postings is that some of those individual postings cover multiple candidates, and so we did send an updated copy of this vacancy factor report, and so it shows more of the status of where all the positions are in the hiring part of the hiring status, as well as the data vacancies and vacancy factor. But overall, out of about 611 vacancies that we count towards our general fund, or our general fund vacancy factor, 55 of those 611 are considered vacant as of the 12/31 snapshot, and then out of 347 non-vacancy factor positions, 83 out of 347.
Okay, and I appreciate you highlighting that, because I know we just received this a few hours ago, and I didn't have the time to look through it yet. That's all the questions I have.
Thank you. Any further questions? Councilman Hussein.
Yeah, just real quick, I can't, I can't imagine that every one of our contracts in place doesn't have contractual language that deals with vacancies and timelines in terms of posting. So I guess my question is, are we seeing a bazillion grievances, and if not, how are we navigating that in a way where we're not seeing a barrage of grievances? Because frankly, I mean, some of these, it is insane, right, how long they've been open. And so I don't know, is, are we just being incredibly kind and amicable as parties? How does that work?
No, so currently we have no open grievances on posting. Every internal posting, the majority of the vacancies you see have been posted internally at some point. There's a six-day posting clause in every contract, after you post it internally for six days. To my knowledge, right now, every, every one of the internal postings has been run and posted, so if we don't get a candidate, and generally you'll see the internal ones fill the higher, higher level, and it leaves us down with the 400 maintenance worker, that is the constant, constant rotation for the vacancies.
There's also situations where things are being reclassed and reorganized and modified based upon the changes in the job and changes in the climate, and so those are also situations where they would not be posted, but we'd also let, you know, if union was questioning that, then we'd be happy to let them know. And they do, they do at times. We see Darren a couple of times a week to talk about vacancies, and last time we saw him, he was very happy at where we were at.
Okay. Give me, just because I want to make sure I understand the key in terms of this vacancy factor report. In terms of an appeal of a reclassification, give me an example of why that might be necessary.
An appeal of a reclassification? If somebody doesn't agree with what the classification is rendered by CECL, then they have the ability to do, to submit an appeal within about 10 days.
Department of Director, or what are we talking about?
Normally it's the employee. They might say that, I thought this should have been higher classified, and so they can submit an appeal with their justification that goes back to CECL, and an appeal meeting is held where they can relay their justification as to why they want their position classified higher, or that it should have been classified higher, and then CECL goes back and reviews. Union's welcome to attend that meeting, management's welcome to attend that meeting, and then a determination is issued. There has been times when a manager, say there's a vacant position, and the department director disagrees with what the determination is, then they can appeal.
That helps. Thank you.
Yes.
Any further questions? All right, oh, sorry, Councilman Jackson.
Thank you. Not to go too far in on the point, but when it goes to the, you were about to be done. We're not going like public service only, are we?
No, I have more questions to answer, but I'm happy to entertain.
It's about police. You're going to talk about that later?
Yes.
I'll wait.
Okay. We're just getting warmed up, so. Onto the general questions. So since the second quarter report, please prepare to provide a verbal, real-time update on what has been filled since 1/1 of '25. We have filled 31 positions. This is excluding TEAs in district court, because we don't do, we only do the orientation and the physicals for the district court positions. So 31. We, I'm proud to say that we had 23 individuals start for fire today, so that was very exciting. The next question is, why does the report no longer list the date the vacancy occurred? Our previous one didn't list that. It was, I believe it's clerical. I can speak to, or Jake can, but this has been added in the new report. Why does the report no longer list a position as new? In my opinion, this was, it was indicated when there's a new position created. So if these were created in the budget, like my new Training and Disputes Resolutions Administrator position, it would say new. That was in the budget process, and that was indicated as new in, I believe, October. So that would be why it didn't say new. The next question is, why has the vacancy factor been taken from the dollar amount totaling up to the first totaling amount in the budget, the first quarter total vacancy factor? That was inadvertently left off, so it's been added to the new version. Thank you, Jake. The next question is, what do the new codings represent in the vacancy factor column? And I didn't quite understand what that question was, so if somebody has information on that, I'd be happy to entertain that on what the specific question was. The next question speaks to the Training and Disputes Resolution position. It's the same position. It's the Training and Disputes Resolution Administrator position that you thankfully approved in the last budget, and that has since been posted, and we are in the process of notifying individuals for interviews. Next one is for public service. We're flashing back to wastewater. I counted nine. It says there are 12, now there are eight positions filled. I counted nine vacancies on the, on the list. We did fill a lab supervisor, I think that was on a previous list, a wastewater maintenance worker, and a storekeeper position since the last list. The same question for the fleet services. Since there were 13, now there are four, and I counted 11 vacancies. So then the next question was, in the first quarter, there were 20 in LPD. This is the second quarter report, there was seven, were 13 filled. I have 18 vacancies for all of LPD, including non-sworn on the current list. We have seven that started in Academy on December 30 for the January Academy. Our posting closed last week for trainees or recruits, and we received over 50 applications. Right now, we have 19 sworn vacancies, which include the seven in Academy. So right now, we have 12 open spots that we could fill. They're technically open, but we don't take them off the list until they are sworn. We also have four people this year of 2025 that will be eligible for retirement. What is the plan to fill those before retirement so there's no vacancy? And we will front-load as many as we can and as many as the budget allows us to. It's a pretty lengthy process that is very in-depth, and we strive to fill as many as we can with the best qualified applicants. What's the number of projected retirements for LFD? We have four eligible for this year. And what's the plan to fill those? So we filled 23 today. And we also have our continuous paramedic posting up, and we'll fill those through an expedited process. So LPD questions?
Okay, so I'll try to cut to it, but you said now we have 12 sworn officers vacant, because you're the seven, so really it's, what, 19?
19.
And I understand that a couple of them are the jail, right? I mean, the detention officer, you count those?
No, I'm talking about sworn. So sworn are only MCO certified.
So help me remember, when we added the officers to the, to the budget, was it four last year or six last year? I'm trying to remember the order, because ever since I've been on here, city council, whatever year that was, there's always been vacant police officers more than we've ever shrunk it down to. So let's say we're shrunk down to 12, there's going to be maybe four retiring, we're going to hopefully... So my thing is, we keep on what we have in the past approved. We want more officers on the streets. Everybody cheers, and then we add four spots or whatever it is. Everybody cheers, and then we add four spots or whatever it is, and then we say, "Look, we added more officers on the streets," but no, we've added more vacancies to the vacancy list. So can we agree that we're not putting officers on the street, but council is funding positions? Because I don't want it to be confused, like, like that's a talking point or a goal. And I guess my question is, is that, do you recall the order in which we've added officers? And I think it was six or four very recently, but even before that, I think it was like another six or four. And I guess I'm just wondering, do you, do you know when we added officers? And do you know how, how small the vacancy list has ever gotten in the last six years? Like, officer-wise, has it ever been down within 10, within six, four, or if you know?
I, I wouldn't know about the sixth year, six years ago, but I am happy to go back and look. As far as I've been in this position, the number I know for sworn is 212. I don't know that that changed last year, but we can go back and look.
Do you know if there's any plans to add officers to this year's budget?
We're in the works of developing the, I won't get too far into spoilers there, but one thing that we did in the, this year's budget is anticipating the state dollars for the Public Safety and Violence Prevention Trust Fund. We had put in some $3.5 million to go towards that purpose, so that would have hired, I think, 15 officers originally. Then they came up with, with a different formula. It was more around the idea of 10 officers, but legislature was not able to come to a full agreement before lame duck ended, and so the bill that was required to take that appropriation and fully enact it went away. But the governor has included it in a supplemental request and in the budget request for next year, so we're watching that for whether or not we might get money from the state to add officers directly into our budget. Another element, as we have been adding officers to the budget, even though it may not be, putting a number in a book somewhere doesn't necessarily put a body on the ground. That's Elizabeth's job to make that happen, but if you, as we add positions and whether or not there's consistent five or six vacancies through just general attrition promoting to the higher-level positions from the officer ranks, the total number can grow, even if it isn't always at full capacity. Sort of like a, what economists call natural unemployment, or I can't remember the terms too much at school.
And I think a lot of times, we hit these, these years where people reach 25 years. So that's a general retirement date for sworn positions, and I think with the last couple of years, we've had several retirements, and we've been trying to keep up with that. I can assure you that it's our top goal. I mean, we, we hired seven that made it through the process. On the 30th of January, we turned around, and I believe we posted on, or 30th of December, I believe we posted January 13th again for the August Academy. So we're posting at least twice a year. We have our lateral process, which we've had a couple come in in the last couple of months. We just had a lateral start a couple of weeks ago. And so, this is something that us, along with the staff services of LPD, we're diligently on. We meet on a weekly basis to discuss strategy and to discuss recruitment. They always, they also have a constant touchpoint on people who are interested in working at LPD, and I really am proud of the collaboration that we've had with the department. I think it's shown some good results in getting these positions filled.
I guess I'll just finish with, that is, I agree that all those things are challenges, but those have always been challenges. And it's always, you know, people are retiring, we, and that's kind of known. But the point is, is that the number of vacancies don't shrink. So maybe if we really wanted to put officers on the street, we could find a way to maybe take some of the money from the vacancies and increase the wages or something for the people, for the police officers there, that'll make it more attractive to fill. But I understand that, that takes a whole collective bargaining, that maybe Dennis can help on, and that's what you guys do at the next one. But just increasing the number of officers on paper is not equivalent to what is being expressed by putting officers on the street. And I just want, if that's really the goal, to find other ways besides un-funding more positions that won't be filled, because like Jake threw you under the bus, it's HR's job, and HR has a hard job doing that. So that's all I have to say about that.
It's, he's absolutely right, too. That is our job, to put the officers in the seats, and we do that collaboratively with LPD, and we're happy to do that. We've made some significant improvements in our CBAs, and thank you for ratifying the last one, because that included a increase in multiplier with the cost savings, which I think is phenomenal. And I think you would, I think it'd be hard to find that at many departments. So those efforts have gone in, but I think that's something that you see in the coming years, and people have to hear about it and know it, and we have to get the word out there. So any collaboration that this body would love to do with HR and LPD, we would welcome it.
All right, I have Councilman's matter for.
Yeah, two things. Thanks, Elizabeth. I was speaking with the chief, and you all are doing a really good job of filling those positions. We're in a rare period of time right now, the Clinton era, where there was a lot of extra money to hire officers and then get them in roles. Those folks are now eligible for retirement, so you're seeing, I think, probably higher than usual retirement rates and losses in, in the rank and file. So it's good that you're working so diligently to get more people in, so I appreciate that effort. I think the question related to codency, coding in vacancy factors is on the personnel report. If you look at the far-right column, it says vacancy, vacant, and then there's like 1.0, 1.04, 1.0, those, those read like they might be FTEs.
FTEs, yeah, full-time employees.
Is that, that's, I think that's the question, is what is that?
Okay.
And so it's, it's not in the vacancy report, it's on the personnel report. Does that mean, so in, for instance, on the non-vacancy factor position for Arborist 500, there are four FTEs open for that position? Is that what that means on that report?
Correct, although awkwardly, that was one where we got the, there was a position that was not showing up on the export, so we corrected that in the new version to three.
Okay.
Yep.
Got it. Okay. So that was, you had mentioned that you weren't sure what that question was.
Thank you, I appreciate it. And I appreciate the kind words.
Do we have any other? Internal Auditor.
Thank you, President Cost. Thank you very much for coming up here. I appreciate it, Elizabeth.
Thank you.
You know, this is my second time going through these, and it's, it's kind of new to me as far as what I'm looking at, what I'm supposed to look at, what I'm supposed to see out of here. So I was wondering if there's any kind of HR industry standards, or factors, or stats that we could add to this, so that we can understand, okay, if there's a vacancy factor of 20%, how does that compare to other cities, other departments, under other job types? Because I, I would like to have everybody filled, everybody, all the positions filled, but realistically, that's not gonna happen. We're always gonna have open positions, so is there, is there something in the HR realm that we can look at to say, "Okay, this is how we're benchmarking our operations compared to someone else"?
That's a great question, and I think we're in a little bit of unprecedented times when it comes to hiring and recruitment and retention, but we'd be happy to talk to some of our colleagues, who we talk to often on, you know, policies, procedures. We share a lot of information in the HR world, especially with our other government entities. So I'd be happy to touch base and get some more information on vacancy factors for other similar, similarly situated government entities.
Thank you. I think it'd help, help with the understanding and the story of what we're looking at here, and how well we are doing versus how well we aren't doing, and where council may need to be able to, or could step in to do some help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Brown.
Thank, thank you, President Cost, and thank you, Auditor. To his point, I think if we are gonna, you know, look at different municipalities and maybe have that information available, I think it would be advantageous, too, for us to kind of have a scorecard, you know, as far as historical data. So we are seeing the improvements within our cities. So for example, with some of our legacy costs, I think some, some of our legacies are, you know, 60, 70% funded, where other municipalities are 95% funded. And so if we, you know, looked at our vacancy factors, let's say, from another municipality like that, we might always look as though we're 20% less, you know, or more than a different municipality. But if we have that information, but also saying, you know, we did have 212 officers, our vacancy factor might be, you know, extra 2% more, but we actually have 217 officers because we approved additional, you know, funded positions. So just making sure that we have, I guess, some, some framework around the history of what we're doing to go along with what Mr. Randall has indicated.
Yeah, thank you so much for your input. We can look at that.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Garza.
Thank you, Council President. So regarding the community policing, do we have, is it 12 that we have budgeted for that? Do you know?
I don't, I believe that sounds correct, but I don't want to speak out of turn for the chief.
Does, does anybody know how many we currently have right now?
That number sounds approximately correct to me, but the accounting, coding, as they get exported out of our software, it looks the same whether, uh, community or not.
Mark, do you by any chance know how many?
I'm sorry, but I don't.
All right.
Sorry about that.
No, that's okay. Just, just a question I have, because, I mean, we've, we've had a, a community police officer in war, too, for like a couple of months, and then they were taken away because of the vacancy factor, and they needed to, to do other, you know, jobs. But I think it's important, is there any, any work between the administration or with HR to work with the police department and see about getting more community police officers on the streets?
I can absolutely touch base with the chief on that piece. Just so you're aware, in our HR system, all police officers, unless they have been promoted to like detective, or their classification is a police officer, so we don't have the specific assignments that go into, and how they're assigned within the department. But I will get that information over to the chief.
Appreciate it. Thank you. It's five right now. Councilman Garza, yep, five, there's five positions filled out of the 12. Do we have any further questions? Seeing none?
Okay. Thank you.
Do you have more to, it's the end of it, yeah?
I think we're, we're good if you were.
Okay, perfect.
All right, thank you.
Sorry, that was awkward.
That's okay.
I assume we all were on the same page there, were?
Yes, appreciate it, thank you.
Yep. All right, we're gonna move on to item six, discussion action. The first item up is going to be a resolution, deficit elimination plan, fringe benefit plan. I believe Desiree, and I'm betting Jake is gonna stay there. All right?
Yep.
The floor is yours.
Excellent. So in front of you, you have a proposed deficit elimination plan document. Overall, this is a component of state legislature that if a fund falls into a deficit status, we have to submit a plan within a certain range of days. Overall, fortunately, what we can say is that this is a underlooked part of our budget, usually because it, it has such a, it carries its own fund balance, it fluctuates year to year, but usually, it doesn't see much variation from what is anticipated. The internal auditor put together a chart that demonstrates the activity from last year and how it surpassed expectations. And this, I think, is where he brought up the idea as well of taking a more frequent look at these other funds, in addition to our general fund reporting, that is certainly a valuable concept. And so, overall, when it comes to this fund, it's an internal service fund. It doesn't have to be budgeted according to state law. And so, the way that this fund receives its funding is that all of the other activities of the city, whether it's our general fund, parks, wastewater, parking, the, all of the fringe costs that are expended in those funds become the revenues of this fund, creating one big pot that we then pay out the fringe costs. And so, this is an area where, because of it being an internal service fund, our auditors didn't flag it for us to say, "Hey, take a look at this, make an entry." And so, we didn't charge out those costs. And as a result, the fund balances of all of our funds as part of our audit were much higher than what if those had gone out. So fortunately, these, these are, this is a cost that we have available to pay, but sadly, we have to bring this before you and ask you to bless this plan to take those charges that we would have otherwise have allocated out and do that in the current fiscal year.
And then I have Councilman's matter for has a question.
Yes. Do you know what was driving those costs? I mean, in a lot of self-insured pools, it's like the GLP-1s and things like that.
Really, what was driving the cost, the increase, was just the increase in premium healthcare.
Oh, premium, okay.
Yeah, yeah, that's the main factor.
That makes sense, okay, thank you. Can you, can I, Councilman, can you remind me where we sit as a, as a city? Are we, we're on the hard cap, is that correct, for employee costs?
Yes, so we're at the hard cap.
How does that interplay with being self-funded?
Yeah, so, being at the hard cap, we will pay the projected premiums up to the hard cap amount that is established by state law. It increases every year based on 12-month inflation. And so, where the self-funding comes into places, where an insurance company would otherwise charge us a rate and a little bit of extra security, that we would pay a premium, being self-insured, they estimate that amount, give us an expectation, and we pay that ourselves. And whether or not the cost of providing healthcare is higher or lower, we absorb the balance internally, and so.
So, and then I see, obviously, we're looking at, this is all appropriation of fund balance, that's correct?
Yes.
So, in the last, the budget report, we just saw we had a 19% fund balance. What does this do to the fund balance?
15.
15, okay. So still within our expected and policy regulations. Okay, thanks.
All right, I have Internal Auditor.
Hi, thank you very much. I, I kind of wonder if you could update us as far as what the operating expense is looking like year-to-date now? I mean, this is end of last year, how are we doing this year?
Yep. So I think I took a preliminary look at this. Overall, we appear to be pretty much on track. There's, in the middle of the year, we have our project, our annual actually determined employer contributions, and so I think those were pretty much around what we budgeted in terms of expectation. So this is one that we're gonna continue to monitor, but we're not anticipating any surprises, and we're gonna look over this twice next year, so that we don't get hit with this again.
Thank you. Any further questions? Okay.
Thank you.
So, Vice President Carter.
Yes, so I will make a motion to move the resolution for deficit elimination plan, fringe benefits plan.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Is there any further discussion? Okay, seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Passes unanimously. All right. Next, we are on to item E, resolution, a budget amendment carry forwards for fiscal year 23, 24 to fiscal year 24, 25. I believe we have Jake and Director Coleman here.
Yes, excellent.
You're here for the long haul.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I, you know, I just missed you guys, I haven't seen you in a few meetings, so. No, but overall, what you're looking in front of you is a mid-year budget amendment carry forward document. So, overall, it addresses several items. As you're looking down, the first block of numbers is our general fund revenues, some minor adjustments there, mostly, as before stated... So overall, it addresses several items. As you're looking down, the first block of numbers is our general fund revenues, some minor adjustments there, mostly as before stated, the state grants, adjusting to current projections for revenue sharing contributions, that is the more Michigan Chart of Accounts word for the Board of Water and Light return on equity that, as we aligned our budget appropriation document last year to that chart of accounts, that's what it looks like. That came in five hundred thousand, higher than the original amount based on what the Board of Water and Light budgeted through the contract that you passed last year. And then the appropriation of fund balance addresses all of the remaining items into our general fund revenues and appropriation of fund balance. The second block, which goes on to the second page, goes into our general fund expenditures. And so within that, we have twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand that comes from city council operating. That is a resolution, you might recall, from last year that you requested unspent funds be carried forward for security, Caesar Chavez event, community funding and training. And so I think you have deliberated amongst yourselves about that, so I won't speak too much more on it. As mentioned before, too, there's fourteen thousand, eight dollars for Office of Community Media for relocating their staff parked in North Capitol Ramp, providing additional parking expenses to their operating budget. Then there is the Human Relations and Community Services, which is obligated funding to be carried forward for services and completing a homeless study commissioned during the previous fiscal year, and funding for meeting basic needs requesting to be reallocated in the current fiscal year. And so the first part of that, the two studies, comes from the department's operating dollars. These are funds that were appropriated the previous fiscal year. And so that, those are studies that were encumbered, ongoing, and due to the timing of the contract and the length of it, what began in last fiscal year is ending in this fiscal year, and those payments are coming due. And so we're requesting those funds be carried forward to complete those payments. Then within the Basic Human Services, racial equity operating, the community-supported agencies, those funds are detailed in the supplemental document that has been provided, that goes into detail about the HRCS allocations. And the department is also here for any questions you might have as to the programming and intent of those dollars. And then before I let you unleash too far on that, I will also identify the last section being the Public Safety Revenue Sharing Fund, which are the dollars mentioned in the previous reporting for the state dollars. And so having not passed, we're removing it from our budget until a point where if the state does decide to reenact it, we can submit another budget to you to accept those dollars.
Okay, do we have any questions? Councilman Jackson.
So I remember this from last year, carry forwards. And I remember taking a little exception to the items that could not be spent, that was budgeted for, therefore is being carried forward, therefore, these are things that for some reason were not spent. And then I just kind of read through what they are. And it's basically, to sum it up, it has to do with housing, hotel stuff, HRCS, racial justice, racial equity, all these things that are also highlighted as a proud accomplishment by, I don't know, the administration, for example. So, and I remember last year, I was like, can we use these things? And there's some of them that's like, okay, they gave the grant money back, they couldn't spend their fifty-six dollars, so they gave it back, they couldn't use it all, so they, oh, another fifty-six dollars, they gave it back. But there's also ones that's like, should be, like, emergency hoteling. I mean, I know there are people out there that needed it this year, and if that's what it's budgeted for, it should have been used. And there's many more of those that were listed, and even the racial justice discretionary racial equity grant, these were put in place for a reason, and I know we approved it, but the administration wanted it, and they came up with the need. So I guess why is it another year in a row that some of the important things haven't been used? And I see you came up here, I would have been looking more at you, but, you know, just for anybody.
So I'll let Doc, or Ms. Coleman speak to the programming aspect. One thing that we have identified that might help us in the future is, I think, one of the intents of some of the carry-forward language and the budget policies related to HRCS has said, according to, I think, Carol Wood's interpretation in the past, that if funds were to be carried forward for the same purpose as the previous fiscal year, they did not necessarily need to be brought forward by resolution. In rereading that and talking with a city attorney, we disagreed with that interpretation in that it didn't explicitly say that. And so that was something where potentially in the next year's budget process, we can suggest some language to make it more quickly accessible during the course of the year that we don't have to wait for the numbers to settle down with our audit before we hit go with all engines. But as far as like the activities themselves, I think you're well versed to describe what they would be going for and your plan for spending them.
And before, and I wanted to say a couple more important ones, because I know there are some hungry people. Emergency food assistance, twenty-five thousand dollars. Subsidized eviction prevention, okay, that's only three thousand. Household stability furniture, I'm not even sure what that is, but that looks like a full amount, too. But the food, I know there's hungry people, the shelter, we heard about it.
Director Coleman, is your, is your light on?
Sorry, I thought it was, maybe not. Thank you. Good evening. Sitting next to me is our, one of our contract managers and the one that works with me on budget. Sitting behind me is our deputy director, Delberta Moses, who's here for moral support. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have that will bring some closure to your concerns, Mr. Jackson. I don't know if I should start with the overall or go specifically with your questions specifically. Why don't I start with the unused funds from the agencies? Am I too close? The unused funds from the agencies is not uncommon, has been taking place since before I got here, where you have agencies that aren't able, for whatever reason, to expend all of their funds, and when it happens, they're asked to return them. If they request to use the funds for an extended period of time or for some other reasons, they'll bring that to our attention. Otherwise, the funds are credited to the account by June thirtieth, I believe it is, so that they can be reconsidered. Your other question with regard to emergency food assistance, there has been an increase in the number of people being served at the local shelters, those who may not necessarily be guests at the shelters, but coming in for meals. And so those funds are being allocated to the two larger shelters in the city. So those funds are basically accounted for. The household stability furniture, when we get special requests from the community because maybe there's been a burnout or some special circumstances, we try and help in that regard. You'll note there, under my notes, that ninety-five hundred has already been spent for household goods for nineteen permanent supportive housing units at Walter French. And so there really is only what, four thousand some odd dollars left over in there that will need to be expended. And so that answers those three or four questions, Mr. Jackson. Does that satisfy it for you? And with regard to the racial equity, that was one that I didn't respond to. Racial equity, the plan is to expend those, hold on, let me get the correct name for it. The racial equity grant funds, two hundred thousand annually. We've already dispersed the two hundred thousand, we have another two hundred thousand that we're expecting to expend or award in May or June, June, when the award letters go out and the budget has been approved. We have worked to get them on the same cycle as the other general fund grant applications, and so they're all being reviewed at this time, and they'll all be reviewed by the HRCS board and the racial equity, the DEI officer is also reviewing those that are racial, race and equity related. So those are all in the process. The plan going forward with those funds is that they will be spent, two hundred thousand a year, and in order for that to take place, there will be some carryover because we have seemed to be averaging a hundred and sixty-six thousand at the beginning of each year, which would be less than the two hundred thousand needed in order for us to award that amount annually.
Thank you, I guess I'll just end with, I appreciate your information. I just would not expect to hear about accomplishments related to anything that's unspent. Because it wouldn't make sense. It would just, we'd just say like, no, we have it there, but we haven't used it, and it would be like opposite of an accomplishment.
Well, and also, please take it into consideration that by the time we get those funds approved, that we can carry forward. Between timing and the crossing of contracts, if it's approved in May, we have to have it all spent by June first, or we have to wait for another reallocation approval. And so the timing seems to not, most of the time, not work in our favor, and so it appears as if we're not spending, but we actually are.
All right, I have Councilman Brown, followed by Councilman Spatafor.
Thank you, Director Coleman, for being here today, as well as, I didn't catch your name.
Daniel Spencer.
Daniel Spencer.
I forgot to tell you.
Yeah, thank you for being here today. I had just one question on the racial equity grant, three hundred and sixty-six thousand, three hundred and forty-six and twenty-one cents. I did, thank you for the explanation, it does make sense, and maybe we can look at how, you know, we can support the timing so the funds, you know, do look as though they've been expended for the proper program and service. But my question would be where it says, these are funds that will have a yearly RFP for racial equity programming in the city of Lansing. I know that when it first began a couple of years, maybe four or five years ago, it was a RFP put out to identify racial equity needs in the community. Could you share, are these funds now being used for programming to implement some of the strategies? I'm not sure if the strategies were provided to myself, or I missed them.
The racial equity alliance funds, you'll see a hundred and seventy-five thousand. Those are funds that we use to help support that plan that you referenced, the MRAJEA plan.
Okay. And so if that's the M, for the plan, the grants are going towards what then?
The grants are going into the community.
For?
The, right, the grants have gone into the community. I believe we awarded fourteen, if I'm not mistaken, grants in September.
Okay.
That used the two hundred thousand that we're referring to. And then there, I think there was, oh, I forget the number, thirty-something odd applications that we received for this upcoming cycle that we're in the process of reviewing, and two hundred thousand of that money will go towards that.
Okay.
And those funds will be awarded in June, we get another allocation in July of one sixty-six. So in June, it'll take it down to one sixty-six, and July it'll go back up to another one sixty-six, which would make it the three hundred, whatever it is.
Okay, thank you. If you're able to, could you send a list to myself or if councils are interested, just of the
Absolutely.
...providers that were awarded, so we could just kind of look at the programs and be more aware. Thank you so much.
I'm happy to do so, and I believe they're also noted on the website.
Okay.
So if I'm mistaken, I'll correct it, but I believe they're noted there.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman Brown, and then Councilman Spatafor had passed. Internal auditor.
Thank you, President Costa. This is, I think, more for Jake. This is really the year-end type activity when the external auditors are finally applying on the financial statements so we know exactly what our account balances are. And I can understand the problem here with getting the turnaround of trying to spend this within a third of a year before the funds are cut off and we have to go through rebudgeting. So I was wondering, is there any way we can get this carry forward along with the financial package and look at these at the same time so we can possibly approve these a month earlier? Any time is probably appreciated, so we'll have the numbers more or less in advance of the meeting, probably months in advance, because by the time the audit's done, there's very little adjustments being done to the financials. So we should know what these numbers are when it's presented. So I'd ask, can we get it with the year-end financials last year in the same meeting to get it approved?
I think part of that comes from the reallocation portion, so just kind of determining where exactly any money that is not going exactly towards its purpose is going to go and just fine-tuning that. But I think there is room for improvement in the way that we do it, whether we amend the language to automatically carry that forward if it's for the same purposes previously approved, or however might be determined to be a good way to approach it. But I think whether we set it aside in a particular fund that we keep independent from our general fund, so it's, or at least as an account number distinct and easy to recall, there's options. So.
Thank you. Any further questions? Seeing none. Vice President Carter.
All right, I will make a motion to move the resolution for budget amendment carry forwards from fiscal year twenty-two-three to twenty-two-four to fiscal year twenty-two-four, twenty-two-five.
All right, we have a proper motion in place. Is there any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose?
Oppose.
Passes seven to one. All right, next we are on to, oh, I'm sorry, six, one, correction. Next we are on to place on file the Human Relations and Community Services Advisory Board Rules of Procedure. And we have Director Coleman still here to be able, if, are you prepared to be able to go over some of these changes?
Yes, happy to do so. The changes that were being proposed were basically an update. If you were to
I'm sorry, Director Coleman, Councilman Brown.
I'm sorry, I had to take some medicine, and I would like a reconsideration so I can vote.
So there's a motion to reconsider the previous vote. Any further discussion on the motion to reconsider? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, passes unanimously. Now we are on to the reconsideration of the item that was previously voted on. Vice President Carter.
All right. I make a motion to move the resolution budget amendment carry forwards from fiscal year twenty-two-three to twenty-two-four to fiscal year twenty-two-four to twenty-two-five.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. No further discussion, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes seven to one. I apologize, Director Coleman, if you want to continue.
Absolutely. The proposed changes to the rules of procedure for the HRCS board was basically updates. If you look at section one, where we were noted as being, or holding our meetings on the fourth floor of the conference room, we're actually at Foster Community Center. And so that's one of the changes. The other is that we meet the first Thursday at City Hall. We actually don't, we meet the fourth Tuesday at Foster Community Center. And then the last piece has to do with quorum consideration. Basically, it reflects the number of people who are approved to serve on the board, a quorum being five, and we're actually looking at changing it to where everybody else is with theirs, and that is the number of seats that are currently filled. So if there is a, two vacancies on our board, the quorum wouldn't be five, the quorum would be four. And so those are the considerations we're asking be supported and approved. the considerations we're asking be supported and approved.
Any questions on this? Seeing none. We appreciate, I'm sorry, Councilman Brown?
Thank, oh, thank you. Thank you for providing the current recommended amendments, Director Coleman, on current rule of procedure regarding the quorum, section eight quorum. And you indicated a majority versus five. Are you having a problem with people attending the meetings, or is there-
We've got a great board and a full board now, and we're looking forward to carrying out the work of the HRCS. But what we did have, when there are vacancies, right now a quorum of eight is five. If we were to have two vacancies, for whatever reason, the quorum would remain five, and we wouldn't be able to carry out the business. So if the quorum reflects the number of people currently serving, then it would adjust with the number of people currently serving, not giving consideration to the vacancies. Otherwise, we would not be able to hold business.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
I have Councilman Garza.
Thank you, Council President. This is to the city attorney. With, with adjusting the, the quorum, does that affect anything with the Opens Meeting Act as well?
No, not in this instance. It just means that quorum is set slightly lower so that they can hold an open meeting properly and then receive comments and do business.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any further questions? Vice President Carter?
Yes, I make a motion to place on file the Human Relations and Community Service Advisory Board Rules of Procedure.
All right. We have a proper motion in place. Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Passes unanimously. I want to thank both of you for being here tonight.
And we thank you. Have a good evening.
You too. All right. We are going to move on to item G. And for, and folks that are tuning in, we are still in committee of the whole currently. We are still in committee of the whole. So we are on to item G, which is a resolution noise permit for Levitt and Stark Excavating, Inc. to request allow the combined sewer overflow zero one five South project. And we have Mark here.
Yeah, Mark, Mark Jones from Public Service here to speak on the item, so.
If you just wanted to go, just give us a little background on this and why it's needed.
Yeah. So this is the third construction season that we're working on this CSO fifteen South project. The contractor has asked for Saturday's work again in 2025. This is to speed up their construction process. They're looking to shave some time off of the completion date so that they can get out of the neighborhood in a more timely manner than, and I had gone through some of the previous years. Basically, we, in 2023, we were able to save three or four weeks of time by working these additional Saturdays. Last year, it was seven to eight weeks of additional time that was saved. And so we're looking for, you know, this, this next construction season will probably be another seven to eight weeks of additional time saved. And they do intend on next year as well, looking at Saturday work. So our, our overall goal is that, you know, with all four years included in this project for Saturday work, we could potentially save up to six months of time to get the project done faster. If we don't have that, we'll probably be toward the end of the twenty-six construction season and possibly into twenty-seven. So it's kind of our goal to get this project done just as quick as, quick as possible with seeing all the tools we have available. So.
All right. I have Vice President Carter.
Thank you, Mark. And thank you for providing that timeline and as far as the previous years and current, and then leading up to next year. Can you also speak to, I know we've had conversation, but can you speak for the public on, there has been some public comment alluding to hindering our air quality aspect of it? If you can speak a little bit to that and the trucks?
Yeah. So generally, in the work zone, trucks will be uncovered before they come into the work site. This is generally because they, they'll basically come, before they come into the work zone, like on MLK, they, they take their covers off their trucks because if they waited till they get onto the neighborhood, then the lower branches would, would end up, it'd probably tear off some branches that way. So, so generally, they, once they get to the, the work site, they take them off. But as they're traveling through the construction site, usually it's a, either an empty truck, or as they're traveling through, they're generally going at lower speeds. I mean, so any particles in the, in the trucks probably aren't going to be flying out. We have had several conversations with the, with the contractor over the years to just be cognizant of, of where they're working and to try to minimize that, that work as much as possible. There is some concern about idling trucks. I mean, they're, generally contractors try to limit their idling time because it costs more in fuel, and so it costs them more when it comes to that. So we have had several conversations with the contractor to try to limit that and to, you know, just to keep out of, keep out of the same areas as, as much as possible. So we've been in constant communication with the contractor on those items.
Okay. Do we have any further, Councilman Jackson?
Thank you. Really quickly, you, you said that it could possibly shave seven to eight weeks off in a year. And wouldn't that be forty-nine to fifty-six days? And there's only fifty-two days in a year. Am I missing something? That means you'll be working basically every Saturday full-time.
It's essentially forty days. So, you know, when you factor in like seven, eight weeks, like it's, you know, forty days is equivalent to about two months of, of a work week. So that's kind of what I was, how I calculated that.
And then my last comment on this, although I probably would want to see everything get done as fast as possible and out of the neighborhood, I've heard from the people and, and I definitely understand the need for a break, and it seems reasonable to want a break on the Saturday. So that's why I won't be supporting it, but it was a close call.
Okay. Councilwoman Pally Vanaglu.
Thank you, President Cost. In the past, we've heard from residents that there have been some issues with the, the contractors beginning too early, maybe working too late based on their typical schedule. And we're told that the contractors will be informed and they'll address it. Can you tell us how they address those issues? I mean, when you start at seven-thirty as opposed to eight AM, what can actually be done? Or is it more of a warning to discontinue that?
We've looked into a couple of those items, and I know some of them had to do with, they were actually city crews that had come in to do some leaf pickup early in the morning. And so I know I've, I've talked to the contractor, and they've been very diligent on making sure that, they know that, you know, they don't start their machines. I know early in the project, they were starting their machines before seven AM or before eight AM on Saturdays. But I believe most of those, or most or not all of those issues have been addressed now. So, I mean, I believe that they, they're aware of it, and I've talked to Tom Stark, who's, who's the, the owner of the, the company. And he is very aware of, of the issues. And so I believe that, that issue has been addressed now.
Thank you. And then in the resolution, it states that this will allow for the contractor to have the ability to work some Saturdays when necessary, but it sounds like the intent is for them to work every Saturday. Is that correct?
It, it gives them the ability to work every Saturday. I mean, last year, we, we really worked every Saturday because they're on MLK, and we, we were trying really hard to get that done as quick as possible. In general, they're going to be working every Saturday as much as possible. Obviously, if there's rain days or weather delays, they, they wouldn't be working that day. But that, I mean, this contractor is going to want to work probably every Saturday if they can. So.
Okay. And thank, thank you for that information. So I, I also have heard from several community members, I mean, we're looking at the years twenty, two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-four, no, a full year, twenty twenty-five, that they will have construction in their neighborhoods. I also agree that they could probably use a weekend break from the noise and disruption. So I will not be supporting the noise waiver. Thank you.
Okay. All right. I have Councilman Garza, followed by Councilman Brown.
All right. Thank you, Council President. Good evening. Thanks for being here.
Sure.
You know, and I don't, I don't believe I'll be supporting this either, but I do have a question for you. I mean, regarding, you know, we've heard from numerous residents in the neighborhood that they don't want to see it. I think I heard from one that they want to see it. However, you know, the CSO project is very important, should have been done years ago. I know it keeps getting pushed on. So I'm assuming, you know, that extra additional weeks that they may have to wait, probably they'll be fine with that. But now with this being Saturday work, and overtime usually applies to, to Saturday work, is that, is that any additional cost to the city?
No, it's, the cost is on the contractor. The contractor's already been bid. So there were unit prices at the time the contract was signed. So they are obligated to pay that price at no more cost to the city for that.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Councilman Brown?
Thank you, President Cost. I had a few of the same questions as Councilwoman Pally Vanaglu, and as well as Councilman Garza. Thank you for asking those questions. I, I would say the same as just listening to constituents. It's, you know, it's been a nightmare, to say the least, for, for many of them. And we've been in community meetings for months and months and have heard from them. And so I, I won't be supporting this either. Thank you so much.
Okay. Do we have any further questions? All right. Vice President Carter?
All right. I'm making a motion to move the resolution for noise special permit Levitt and Stark Excavating, Inc. request to allow for a combined sewer overflow on zero fifteen Project South.
Okay. We have a proper motion in place. Is there any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Oppose? Oppose? Fails. Eight, zero. Thank you. Next, we are on to item H. I am going to ask Vice President Carter to move the resolution so we can discuss.
All right. I will move the resolution for objection of transfer of escrow, three liquor license from Rite Aid Michigan, Inc. to Vance UZP, Inc. to forty-seven hundred Pleasant Grove Road, nineteen-ten East Michigan Avenue, and fifty-nine, or fifty, forty-five nineteen South Meyer Luther King Junior Boulevard.
All right. We have a proper motion. I am going to open the discussion that you will find with this. It is rejuvenating South Lansing, E&amp;O Swag. Councilman Garza, Hussein, and myself all sent letters to the liquor control, and we also received letters from these groups opposing the liquor stores at Michigan Avenue and Pleasant Grove. I'm sorry. Councilman Garza did not send a letter. So these would be placed at forty-seven hundred Pleasant Grove, which is about a hundred feet from LaFroy, if you're familiar with where that's at. Councilman, oh, and then at the old, on Michigan Avenue, at the old Michigan Mart. And the reason that we are, I am opposing these is the density in liquor stores that I have. I live, I live on that block, and there are, are at least five liquor stores I can find within a quarter of a mile. And to city attorney, the promises that were made in the letter we received, are those legally binding in any way?
No.
Okay. I just wanted to get that on the record, so thank you. Do we have any questions on this resolution? It was essentially, all right, be sent to oppose adding more party store, liquor stores, convenience stores, whatever you want to call them. So I have Councilmember Spatafor, Councilmember Singh.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to clarify, the role of city council in this process is at this point merely advisory, correct? This is just expressing the will of the council to the Liquor Control Commission. MLCC will still have the final determination.
Correct. They will, yes.
Thank you.
Councilman Hussein?
Yeah, it's, it's, sorry. It's, it's very much like when we consider a rezone, this becomes one of many factors that they can include. So, you know, first of all, I'm, thrilled to hear that the application for the old Uli's House of Rock has been pulled. That would have been a horrifically bad location for a liquor store. I'll let Mr. Cost obviously speak to the location on the, or I'm sorry, on the north side of the city. But I cannot think of a worse location than forty-seven hundred Pleasant Grove Road. When you talk about saturation of liquor stores, obviously, we have St. Ice just to the south of this. To the north of this, we have four active liquor licenses at the corner of Pleasant Grove and Homes. This is within a stone's throw of a public park, Rizdale Park, of Leroy Fro Public Housing, of the Pleasant View School, of the Boys and Girls Club. The list goes on and on. This is a property that over the, just the last few years, has had twenty-four enforcement actions. This particular applicant has owned this dating back to two thousand and eleven, and frankly, hasn't been the greatest of actors at this particular location. When, when the individual came to the podium and stated that, you know, frankly, this isn't, this place isn't rentable, I would agree. It's been allowed to deteriorate to the point where it is an absolute blight on our community. And, and frankly, I'd love to see either rehabbed for its original purpose or tore down, frankly. I don't know how a liquor store in an area that has already saturated, what I'm not going to do, is I'm not going to be a part of, you have a flawed liquor control act. You have speculators that come into our area, and they snatch up properties like this, and they don't know what to do with them. So they go to the bottom of the barrel in terms of use, and it is absolutely not okay. And then you have deteriorated structures, continuing to deteriorate, to continue to ride on the vine. That is a recipe for disaster. And what I'm not going to do is be on the back end applauding and parading for, for additional liquor stores that prey on our most vulnerable, some of our most vulnerable communities. So, and with regard to that particular location, we are looking at a census tract where about one out of every three individuals lives in poverty, and about ten percent of those households pull in less than ten thousand dollars a year. We have done a lot in this area over the past maybe five to 10 years to try to improve the circumstances of those folks. We have placed the Willard Walker Football Stadium in Rizdale Park. We have looked at programming and reimagined programming of Pleasant View School. The Boys and Girls Club has partnered with Jackson National Life to bring the Teen Zone and other amenities to that particular location. We've partnered with the Lansing Housing Commission to see a number of rehabilitation projects at that particular public housing space. We have worked with the school district down the track at Hill. We have also worked on, with the school district in terms of the programming at Hill, so that we can have a vibrant career technical education pathway over there. We have worked with the Southwest Action Group to pull in a town square to the southwest corner of Pleasant Grove and Homes, to support a number of businesses over there with facade improvements and the like. We have built an entirely new park, Beacon Park, just off Pleasant Grove. Are we where we want to be? No. But we are working our tails off in that area to make sure that the people that are living in that area have every tool that they need to ascend from their circumstance. And I just cannot imagine taking twenty-seven steps back with the, with the emergence of a liquor store in that area. So although we cannot control the liquor, the Michigan Liquor Control Commission's process, I think we would be negligent at best if we didn't at least send a resolution in, you know, demonstrating our, our lack of support. Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Garza?
Thank you, Council President. So I just wanted to clarify the reason why I did not send a letter into the liquor control, and that's because the particular parcel, that's the old Uli's House of Rock, has been sitting there. It's been vacant for quite some time, collecting blight. So I was hopeful, because this liquor control statement was pretty vague. So I was hopeful it was going to be a, you know, a bar, restaurant, again. Obviously, they withdrew that, so that will not be happening. I was hopeful, you know, it was going to be rejuvenated and, and the vacant, or that vacant property was going to, you know, look nice again. So it didn't happen. So I didn't write a letter anyways. But hearing the will of the people and the different community groups that surround the other two locations. the other two locations, I know that this resolution is non-binding, but I will be supporting the resolution for that reason. Thank you.
Councilman Jackson.
Just for a little discussion. First, is it a full liquor or is it the wines and beer and mixed drink that I'm, I think I'm reading, because Rite Aid had that, right? Okay. Wine, beer, spirit, so not the hard stuff? Okay. And then if they did, when they do transfer their liquor license, isn't it true it has to be in Lansing? Or is that like a wider jurisdiction of Michigan? Does anybody know that?
I think it has to be in Lansing.
Does a Rite Aid liquor license that's eventually going to be transferred have to be in Lansing or it can be wider than that?
You're, you're talking about a liquor license that's currently in escrow?
Yes, that.
So in this instance, there are three that are owned by Rite Aid. They're currently in escrow. They are sort of marked for Lansing. Yes, those are Lansing liquor licenses.
And then I, I really do think that, and I don't know how I'm going to vote, but people are still going to drink. Whether that spirit store is on the corner and probably, actually probably nice because I do know that the group rehabbed a West Side store and made it nice. But besides the point, people are going to drink, whether they walk to half a block to Ives or QD or Vaughn's or all them places, they're going to drink. But I'm a little bit in between and ultimately, I do respect the work that Adam Hussein has put in down there and advocated for. And given that is his direct neighborhood, I, I think my, my tiebreaker would be to support the resolution. It's non-binding. I don't know what's going to happen, but it's, it's not, it's not anything I enjoy, you know, saying I voted for against a liquor store or not, excuse me, a spirit store. But with all things considered, in this instance, I will support the resolution.
Councilman Jackson, the SDD license is for hard liquor as well. I have Vice President Carter followed by Councilwoman Pelley Vanaglu.
Yeah. So after looking and reviewing the resolution, I mean, I agree with the, the remarks from Southwest Action Group. I do think that there is, based off the stats there, but I also agree with what they mentioned on providing economic impact as well. So there, they did speak to that piece also. From the person that spoke today, there was reference that it is not going to be solely a liquor store. And I think to Councilman Jackson's point, it would be very much similar to the various quality dairies that we have. So I guess my understanding is what would the difference be if it also includes, I believe it was also presented that it would have convenience to food, including milk, eggs, cheese, which is also part of food assistance, which a lot of neighboring individuals utilize in that area. I think the other aspect of it that was brought to our attention is that there, at two of the locations, there has been recommendation, or not recommendation, but information from Planning and Zoning Office that there was no open or unresolved ordinance or code violations associated with the property of 1910 East Michigan Avenue or 4700 Pleasant Grove Road, which in the resolution, it speaks to, there has been code op, code violations. They also speak to illegal operations, which I don't see any information on those infractions also. And then the individual did mention that they were removing and withdrawing 4519 South Meyer Luther King Boulevard. That's also to be included in the resolution. So there just seems to be some discrepancies and some inconsistencies here that may need further clarification. Just wanted to make sure I stated that.
Councilman Hussein.
Yeah, let me respond to the discrepancy piece. There are no discrepancies. There are 24 enforcement actions over the last few years. What that says is there's no open enforcement actions. This has absolutely been, because I live very close to this property, this has absolutely been a problematic property for everybody in that area for quite some time. It is, it is a problem. The other piece is there's nothing that holds Mr. Zany to any of those promises that are in there. Frankly, we have a few liquor stores in that area that would like to masquerade themselves as providing food assistance and the, and the such. And so you might end up having a box of apples or a box of iceberg lettuce or, but the, the reality is their money maker is flooding the streets with alcohol and, or they wouldn't be looking to position themselves there. So again, we have a ton of correspondence from people in that area. They are saying they don't want it. And frankly, we don't represent ourselves up here. We represent them. So I really hope that folks can find a way to support this. Thank you.
Councilwoman Pelley Vanaglu.
Thank you, President Cost. First of all, I did just want to say on the record that it's, it's well-known that in my day job, I work for the Michigan Department of Licensing and Regulatory Affairs. The Michigan Liquor Control Commission is one of their agencies that's affiliated. I did have a conversation with our city attorney earlier today just to, again, put that forward, ensure that there is no conflict of interest. I have no authority in that realm. I have no decision-making power. There is no conflict of interest per our city attorney. So I am able to vote on this issue. I just wanted to make sure that we captured that on the record. The second part is that, you know, I, honestly, I was really torn. I mean, I received the, the resolution, read it over, the letters in support, you know, SWAG, rejuvenating South Lansing, you know, E&amp;O. These, these are neighbors who truly, truly care about their community. They're invested in bringing up the community. I volunteered with SWAG numerous, numerous times. And while I don't think that these, you know, business owners have anything nefarious, I, I don't see it that way. I think that they are looking for a business opportunity. But also, you know, if you've been in those neighborhoods and you've been doing community cleanups and you've picked up numerous, numerous liquor bottles, lighters, all types of things that come from the already three established businesses I can think of on Homes and Pleasant Grove that, that already sell alcohol, liquor, beer, wine. And then St. Ives on that exact, you know, very near that corner on Jolly and Pleasant Grove, they also do too. And it contributes to the trash we see on the sidewalks, the trash we see in the parks. You know, when you're out there, you're not sure what, what you should touch, what you shouldn't, broken glass everywhere, broken glass. And I, you know, again, I don't believe that these business owners have, have anything nefarious. This resolution is non-binding. But we have had such an outpouring from our established community members in those neighborhoods. So I, I've been on the fence about this up until this moment. I will support the resolution, understanding that it's non-binding. It is something to put forward, but that's, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Brown.
Thank you and thank you for everyone's input. I agree that, you know, the community has always spoken about new economic opportunity, you know, versus, you know, a general liquor store. For me, I, I won't be supporting because, not that I don't support, I think we should take a different approach, is really looking at how many liquor licenses are in Lansing? How do we enforce those stores that are not, you know, actually doing a good job or have people, you know, with liquor all outside and all of these different violations? And see, how do we approach that as a city whole, citywide versus, you know, this particular, you know, if I have the information here too, that there's no current violations, I don't want to kind of criminalize the position of, you know, attack on a business owner that, that I don't have any information on that's doing anything wrong with this particular license. I also saw the West Side store that, you know, was remodeled and it's Michigan Liquor Control. So I agree that we need to do something different and we need to. And the work that you've done, Councilman Hussein in Southwest Lansing, along with the constituents, I've been wondering if I've been right there volunteering with you all and supporting for years. But I just, this, I, I won't be supporting because I think we should be looking at different approaches. How do we enforce the current bad actors of liquor stores? And what can we do, you know, as a city versus, you know, this particular, I asked, I asked our team here, have we done a resolution on any other liquor license before? We haven't. So what can we do differently? Have we done resolutions on liquor license? How many have we done? Greg?
I don't know, but I found several when I went back through prior council resolutions to see phrasing and other things like that.
So we usually do this when it's, what was the, I guess, the, why, why did we send the other ones?
We've done them, well, we've sent resolutions requesting, sorry, we, the council has sent resolutions requesting revocation of licenses in some instances. That's separate from a, a hearing process, try to revoke a license. The council has also sent resolutions opposing the transfer out of escrow from, for liquor licenses. I can try to dive in and find those, but I, I did look them up previously on Friday.
So is that something, because I, I mean, is there precedent, basically? That, that's what I just, that, that's my thing here.
I, well, I mean, in terms of precedent, it's not really precedent-setting. The Michigan Liquor Control Commission sent the communication and asked for input, if any. And then this is the resolution that's being brought forward by the council. And just to the question of have we, has the council done this in the past? The answer is yes. They have introduced and passed resolutions opposing such transfers.
Do we have any outcomes?
Honestly, I don't know. I didn't, the, the one that I, the one that I know happened, I think was in like 2009 maybe. And I couldn't find what MLCC did with that.
So the last one was 2009?
No, I, I know that there was one in 2009. I'm not sure that that was the most recent time that we've done it.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Spatafor.
Well, I, the, the reason I asked my original question about our role in this is MLCC does ask for our input if we do want to do that. And the way we do that is we speak through resolution. So it is not unprecedented, nor is it outside of what would be normal course of action for this type of action from the Liquor Control Commission, just for what that's worth.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right. We have a proper motion in place. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose? Passes six, two. Next, we are on to item I. This is a resolution introduction and setting public hearing ordinance amendment, chapter 404.15 Parking. Vice President Carter, I'm going to have you move the resolution.
All right. I will move the resolution for the introduction and setting public hearing ordinance amendment, chapter 404.15 Parking.
All right. We have a proper motion in place. So this is dating back to 1018 of '24. We had heard this and it was finalized at our public safety meeting and somehow it fell off the radar. And essentially, what this is doing is providing us a tool where parking services and LPD are able to do something about these cars that end up in the roads with no plates. It would, it would be able to allow them to cite those vehicles rather than what we have right now, which is the green sticker on there, which is a toe for an abandoned vehicle, which is a separate state law. This would actually give us a power to say, yeah, your car with no plate on it that's been sitting there, we're going to cite it. We can cite it every day until you move it. So this is also going to be a late item tonight if the, if we do move forward with this for council. This is something that, again, they had written up, 1018, and, and it just fell off the radar. Councilman Jackson.
I, I'm probably okay with all of that, except for if we make it a late item and then we move for immediate effect, that's, you know, where I would.
Yeah. So this is going to be set for a hearing. Yeah, this is just a set of hearing.
I'm sorry.
And I apologize, I didn't say that. And yes, the public hearing will be March 10. Is there any further discussion on this? Okay. Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose? Passes unanimously. There are no other things. We are adjourned at 7:35. We will reconvene in 10 minutes.